Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community, especially Thomas Timlin and John Doherty. Please keep the Timlin and Doherty families in your thoughts this evening. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Dr. Rothtraub?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Mr. Dunne, now.
Here.
There will be a motion this evening to move items 5F and 5G to Seventh Order for final votes. Anyone who would like to speak on these pieces of legislation may do so in Fourth Order during citizens' participation. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order, 3A, minutes of the Scranton firefighters pension commission meeting held August 17th, 2022. 3B, minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held August 17th, 2022. 3C, agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held September 21st, 2022. 3D, minutes of the composite pension board meeting held August 17th, 2022. 3E, city of Scranton's monthly composite pension fund investment performance review for August 2022 as received from PFM Asset Management, September 21st, 2022.
Are there any comments on any of the Third Order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one. Just wanted to say Lashana Tova to all those who celebrate Rosh Hashanah.
Are there any other announcements?
Yeah, I'd just like to announce that on October 1st, the North Scranton Neighborhood Association Watch is going to have their Oktoberfest. It's going to be between... Actually, I don't have the times, but it is on October...
Five to eight, I believe.
All right. So, five to eight on October 1st, the North Scranton Neighborhood Watch is going... North Scranton Neighborhood Association Watch will be holding their annual Oktoberfest. That is all.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? I just have one. Tomorrow, Wednesday, September 28th, at approximately 1:00 PM, Marywood University will be testing their emergency notification system. The system will go off for about one minute. It will probably be heard in most of Dunmore, Troup, Green Ridge, North Scranton, and the plot section of Scranton. The announcement will state that it is only a test, but just so everyone's aware if they're here, that in their neighborhoods tomorrow. Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth Order, citizens' participation.
Allison, could you get the...
Joan's always first, so Joan Hoda-Wanis.
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton.
I understand that we have an approved DPW union contract. Is that going to come up in legislation for your approval?
Yes.
Do you know when that'll come?
I do not. I was told that we were going to put that... that it was just being put into the legislative format.
Okay.
I was hoping to receive it for next week, but as of now, we haven't received it yet.
Okay.
But there's still the possibility we receive it tomorrow for next week.
All right. The other three, police, fire, and single tax office, any progress?
Those negotiations are ongoing.
And any progress on the 2021 audit? Never mind. You gave me your answer. With regard to the payroll preparation tax, I saw the article in The Times this morning, the school district's concerns, and apparently of 8,500 potential accounts, only 2,400 businesses have made a payment for the period April 1st through June 30th. That's 28%. So it means that 72% are delinquent. And you had anticipated collecting 1.8 million for the nine months of this year, but you've only collected 248,000 so far. Now, I understand you're going to have a caucus with Burckheimer on October 25th. Will Burckheimer, one, answer the questions about the self-employed and rental income?
Yes.
And, two, have current information on how much has been collected?
That is the plan, yes.
Okey-dokey. Hallelujah and past ammunition. I looked at the city's website, and there is a delinquent refuse slash trash fee database. It's one file. It's as of August 1st. And as of August 1st, the principal that is delinquent is $10,209,772.98, and the interest is $434,198.20 for a grand total of $10,643,971.18. That's as of August 1st. Now, you need two more databases to add there, one on delinquent property taxes and one on delinquent payroll preparation taxes. And I'm hoping to see those before the end of the year. So give a warning note to Burckheimer. Don't let them slide. I attended the composite pension board meeting on September 21st, and I was dismayed to learn that the four vendors that they have, PFM Asset Management, Mellon Bank, Durkin and McDonald, and I think Thomas Anderson, all their contracts are expired, anywhere from 12 to 18 months. Yet we are paying taxpayer dollars for those vendors to manage the $106.5 million that remains in the fund. Now, is that any way to oversee and provide internal controls for taxpayer dollars? I recommend that you send a recommendation to the mayor, that she have a come-to-Jesus meeting with all her department heads, all the commissions, authorities, and boards, and get a current list of all the vendors with which they're doing business and paying taxpayer dollars. And what was the expiration date on all those contracts? And anyone expired needs an RFP ASAP. We can do all these grants and all this other stuff. You should not be handing out government money, taxpayer dollars, when you don't have a valid contract. You're asking for trouble. And God forbid it comes down, you'll have no excuse. You need to fix that. And let's see. Oh, yes. And I was very pleased to see, at my request, PFM did provide a copy electronically of their monthly document, which got into Third Order. And you should be looking at the city's performance, ignore all the other strenuous material about the markets. As of January 1st, the fund was $135 million. It is down as of August 31st to $106 million, and this month is going down even more. So you need to have current contracts with those vendors, or you're going to be explaining what happened to the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Lee Morgan.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here today is that, you know, I've done eight videos on rewriting the city charter, and in one of the videos, I went to Pine Brook, to Chick Feldman Field, took a look at that field and the surrounding area. And the reason I'm saying that is we're having a discussion on Lack One College using that area. Look, there has to be an agreement that they repair any damage they do to that field, and to be honest with you, the city needs to get something for it. The city needs to get some kind of money, some kind of... it doesn't have to be a lot of money, but I think the residents have a right to expect a return on something they rent. You don't have to go crazy and try to bleed them dry, but, you know, it's time to really have all this stuff in writing, not in make-believe. And, you know, since I bring that up, you know, ECTV, I think they do a really great job. I don't know why their funding is so low, and I don't understand, because the franchise fee should be supporting ECTV, and it's not because they've made a couple videos that I was in for... because I want the Home Rule Charter rewritten, and I think that today's agenda really drives it home by... I think there's $3.5 million here, grant money, that I think that the residents should sit on these boards and decide where this money was going to go and how it was going to be spent, and whether a lot of that money should have been diverted somewhere else. But, you know, in saying that, you know, ECTV should have its own little area to work from, whether it's a building of their own, a building that's been condemned or abandoned, and then funding found to rehab it and give them a base to work from. Because if this is a community asset that all the residents, the city, and the county, and probably a lot of other places, you know, rely on for... or can rely on for information, I think we should enable them and empower them and make them independent. You know, I don't know if... I don't know how they feel about making the videos that I present, because I think that I'm controversial as far as the government itself is concerned, because I don't think they appreciate my opinions, and I don't know what play that has on ECTV, but hopefully none. But, you know, I'd like to see some really meaningful legislation come out and start to enhance the life of the residents of the city. And I think until we can put citizens on these boards and they can see that they're part of the process and have some control on where this money is going... You know, people talk about taxation. I really think that we need to consider who we're taxing and how much we're taxing them for, and pay a lot of attention, because I think the American people and Scrantonians in general are severely overtaxed. And, you know, people speak about tax money as if it's free and it's just floating in the air, and that's not the case. You know, we need a dedicated small-business incubator in this city, driven to create employment and opportunity for the residents, because you can spend all the grant money from whatever source it came from in every part of this city at one time or another, and it will all revert back to the same condition it was in when you started, because you're just chasing blight, and that's not the answer. Empowering people, giving them employment, giving them a living wage, giving them an opportunity for advancement, not only for the citizens, but for the whole city, because the city goes where the residents go. And if the residents earn money and they're successful, the city becomes successful. How? By the success of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Just on a couple points there, too. So the agreement with Lack One College is on our agenda tonight as 6A. For ECTV funding, we did increase their allocation last year at their request, and we'll see what they request this year. And the grant funding that's on our agenda tonight, that grant funding isn't awarded yet. That's just the city agreeing to be the conduit for that application. Thank you. Next on the list, Doris Koloski.
Somebody told me I didn't move it. Okay, good evening, Council, and I hope Billy King is well. A meeting was held last Thursday night that the neighbors of GMC and the council pushed for. It was very disappointing. Renderings were shown of a garage to be built on the entire even side of the 400 block of Colfax. Were just that, renderings and not plans. The height of these renderings is based on underground parking for first floor, which they would not need to bother changing the zone to civic for that height. I think they said 48 feet. But insist they do need to change the zoning, because if they run into a problem, then they would have to change and build up again, which would definitely not be acceptable. The 300 block would be their ED department and trauma, and the 200 block would be a very high garage filling the entire block also. Two blocks of garages is not health care that keeps people from having to leave for New York and Philadelphia for better services. Two blocks of garages will not offset revenue from taxes. The cancer center, that benefits people probably from having to leave town maybe, but that's going in Dixon City. The behavioral center, which we very much need, that's going in Plains. Now, you can correct me at the end if I know that if the taxes are wrong that I'm trying to talk about, because I'm not really up on that new payroll tax thing, but that's going in Plains. And the orthopedic center, it's already in Scranton. So what payroll tax is going to offset the tax loss to the city from all the homes that were brought down? They also admitted that they didn't budget for the nicer-looking building on the 400. They told us that they thought we want to hear, but then they also said their bottom line is what's going to rule. That's why they need to change the zone, because they really... So we really didn't learn anything that we didn't already know, except that those other blocks are not going to have the buildings on them, but that we were guessing. They're going to... The whole blocks are going to be filled with garages, and there'll be a possibility of any of the little green spaces that are left will be pocket parks. And then on my side of the street, one of the houses that everybody was complaining on Facebook about being torn down will be used for offices supposedly, and everything else will be green space for gardens or pocket parks. Well, they didn't spend $230,000 to pull down my friend's house, Salvatore's house, to put a garden in there for the neighbors. So obviously, that's like a holding thing till they decide to eat up the rest of the block if they ever can in the future. So right now, we're begging you still not to let that civic go through, because they're not giving us a chance here at all to really come to a compromise, because the compromise, as I can see it, is unless we want to. Now, this is a letter that went out to their employees, and I brought a copy from each of you in case I don't have time to read it. An employee gave it to me, and this is a copy of what they said the day after the meeting, if I can read it without my cheaters. "We're moving forward to our efforts to expand Geisinger Community Center by meeting with the Scranton officials and our neighbors in the Hill Section. Our goal is to make better health easier for our community by improving our hospital as a place to work and to get care. We will be sharing some preliminary concepts of how we might expand our emergency department, convert more of our inpatient units to private rooms, and create a better parking solution on campus to show our community how an expanded GCMC can meet our community's health care needs. These concepts are purely conceptional and subject to change based on numerous factors between now and a potential final plan. It is possible that some of these meetings, conversations, and conceptual renderings become part of our local news coverage in coming weeks. So we wanted to tell you first, as we learn more about the city's rezoning decision and engage our neighbors, we'll share more details with you in the meantime. If you have any questions, our managers have been briefed on the situation. Thank you." So the key words in everything that they said to us, everything they proposed to their employees, is subject to change. So what their deal is, is if they want to get that civic thing so they can change... I know, time's up. I'm leaving.
But I'll reach out to you and discuss some things we're talking about to help.
Please. I have my mask on, because I just recovered from...
Thank you. Next on the list, Les Spindler.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. I'm glad Joan mentioned Burckheimer. She reminded me of something that I forgot about. Last month, I got a letter from Burckheimer. I've been retired since 2018, and his letter said that my wife and I haven't sent in a tax return for our business. I don't know what they're talking about. I've worked different jobs over the years, but I've never had a business. I have an accountant that does my taxes, and he gives me the form every year to send in. I never owe anything. And now they're telling me my wife and I have a business all of a sudden. That's news to me. If that's the people we have trying to collect our taxes for the city, I think we're in trouble. But I thank Joan. Thank you. I put that letter aside about a month ago, and I still haven't made a phone call. I got to give them a call, straighten them out. Anyway, next thing. Last meeting when I was here, I mentioned a few things to the mayor about getting into City Hall. She said, you know, I want to make this building safe. We're not going to have anybody running through. I said, well, put a police officer downstairs. She said, well, we can't afford it. Well, it seems like we could afford a lot of other things, like you people are... you know, you hired a... you agreed to hire an outside firm to find funding for the city, which I don't think we needed. We could have spent that money on a police officer for downstairs. Got a beautiful new door there now. Whenever we need money, we seem to find it, but we can't put a police officer downstairs so we can come and go as we please and get business done in our City Hall. The City Hall belongs to the people, not the mayor. Lastly, you're probably sick of hearing this, but last year I was told by the supervisor DPW, we're going to get our corner fixed, the Bull War in North Rebecca, and so far, nothing. Now, the colder weather's setting in, so I'm probably going to have to wait another year now. I think this is getting ridiculous, and I know if former director Preambo was still in charge, it would have been done already, because he was doing a heck of a job. And when I asked the mayor, why isn't he there anymore? It's a personnel issue. Every time somebody resigns or whatever, it's a personnel issue. But I think the people of this city should know what's going on, because he was doing a heck of a job, because I spoke to him last summer, and he said he watches the meetings all the time, and when he hears people's problems, he gets them taken care of. So now we have the business administrator as the acting DPW director, and nothing's getting done. So I'll keep coming back until it's done. I might be on my deathbed by then, but who knows?
We did get a response. I just have to find a response to... and I'll address that in Fifth Order.
Okay.
We got a response to your... when you were in the last time, we reached out, seeing when that would happen. We did get a response. I just can't... I just wasn't able to find it real quick, but...
All right.
I'll address it in Fifth Order.
Thank you.
Next on the list, Charles Cortez. Cortez.
My name is Charles Cortez. Good evening, members of Council. My family and I are residents and property owners in the 200 block of Wheeler Avenue. I am here concerning CMC's proposal to construct an eight-story parking garage in the 200 block of Colfax Avenue. Our property extends from Wheeler Avenue to Sherwood Court. The rear of our property, all 120 feet of it, will be adjacent to the proposed garage. An eight-foot garage is approximately 75 feet tall. With the additions of elevator housings, HVAC units, lights, and cell towers on top, the height may exceed 85 to 90 feet. Just imagine an 80-foot wall in your backyard. The walls at Lewisburg Federal Penitentiary are not even that high. Sherwood Court is barely wide enough for a single car to drive through. DPW trash removal trucks have a difficult time to maneuver through the court. They have to back down the court to collect the trash, because they can't turn onto Roslyn Avenue, because Roslyn is a one-way... the one-way street and is too narrow. Using our garage and parking areas in the rear of Sherwood Court now is difficult because of the traffic. Imagine how difficult it will be if this garage is built. We live in a residential zoning area. We have, for too long, had to bear the burden of the aggressive nature of the hospital's expansion programs. The peace and tranquility of our backyards and neighborhoods will be forever gone and will be in the shadows of an 80-foot-high monster wall. The devaluation of our property is immeasurable, and our tax base will not reflect this devaluation. Please consider what I have said concerning the parking garage and the rezoning issue that comes with it. Please do not make us a victim of collateral damage for the sake of Geisinger's aggressive expansion plans. Imagine you having an 80-foot wall in your backyard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the list, Ron Elman.
Good evening, Council. Many of you won't like my opinions on things tonight, and I could care less. I leave no question about my absolute dislike of illegals, not immigrants, Bidens, no English-speaking, uneducated, unskilled, just useless people that will never contribute a thing to America. Our country's been infested with them. But today, when I read the paper this morning on the front page, it's this article about a Congolese family. They're unhappy with the way things are. Here they have hospitalization, welfare, food vouchers, who knows what else? Six children in school. What are they, $15,000 apiece? Six children in school and two males living with them, 20, 24 years old. They're so unhappy with the situation, I guess the finances. He threatens to leave Scranton. Well, I'd like to do everything within my power to help him achieve this, if it's possible. I just can't imagine what this group will ever achieve. They will never be Americans. They will never assimilate. They will never assimilate like we need. But how can you be so thankless, so ungrateful for everything being done and put in print in the paper how unhappy you are with situations? You know, if I could round up all 123 million illegals, if I was in a position to do so, I think I'd just put them in concentration camps, because they'll never, there'll never be Americans, and they don't.
Mr. Elman, that's not, relax. That's not acceptable, Mr. Elman.
Americans don't.
Mr. Elman, are you a Native American?
I didn't hear.
Are you a Native American?
Yes.
You are? You're, I mean, because otherwise, we're all immigrants, right?
I am not saying anything adversely that affects you people. I know how far I could go. And back of the, and back of here, it says what you can do. This is my opinion. Here's people, this town is full of people making 7:50, 8:50 a month, trying to keep a roof over their heads, and here is a man living on practically nothing, a whole family complaining about it. I'll tell you what, before it's all over, this country will wish there was more thousands like storms, Washington, they wish we had a military, they wish we had some brave people to stick up for America and fight for America, because we are terrible, our Navy's second now. We have just went down the tubes the past couple of years. There's no coming back again. How would you like to be in the military with such leadership that we hear on television in Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
These aren't leaders. I'm sorry I went over. I'm sorry I offended you. See, there's too many people in this city are fearful of saying anything.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Next on the list, Angelo Jarman.
It's good to see you all again. I've come to reiterate some of what I've spoken about last week in support of upzoning Scranton and deregulating some aspects of our zoning code, as well as my support for other aspects of urbanization for the city. So to reiterate some of what I said last week, I do believe that Scranton zoning, as it is now, is better than a great deal of cities in the country, where building anything other than a single-family home is just outlawed entirely. However, our housing supply is too constrained to meet the demands, and it's, and when that happens, it causes housing prices to skyrocket needlessly. And I do believe that the best solution for this is to allow for the denser housing construction that many other cities have done, to great success. It does not mean necessarily building skyscrapers or allowing industrial plants in residential neighborhoods, but some, even solutions as simple as outside of downtown allowing four or five-story apartment buildings, where we could have more people living in a smaller area. It costs the city less in terms of infrastructure. If we could have 100 people living on a single block instead of 100 people spread out across a mile, considering that roads can cost 1 to 2 million a mile, and that's not including the cost of water, gas, electric infrastructure, and it really, we really do owe it to the citizens of Scranton, to everyone living in Scranton, to take a more responsible, measured stride in how we zone our city. Because no city in America can afford to have this sort of fluffy housing that's spread out. It costs us too much money. If we were to just raise taxes to cover the replacement costs on its own, you would see, you would have to have taxes more than like double or triple in some instances. And I do believe that denser zoning is a solution to that. But in addition to building denser housing, I believe that we can ease some restrictions on mixed-use residential housing, such as allowing new construction in Scranton that, for example, as you might see in other cities or even some areas in Scranton that have been grandfathered in with older zoning codes. You have commercial properties on the first floors of these buildings, and you might have a second, third, fourth floor that's all housing. And what you have with that is on a single lot of land, you have revenue coming in through the business, you have taxes coming in through that business, you have taxes coming in through the incomes of these residents, and then you have a more valuable property that can be taxed, that would bring in more tax revenue for the city, while the per unit, like per person, living on that property would still be paying relatively low amounts into those Having those sorts of developments in Scranton, I believe, would do a lot of good in increasing the character of the city. It would do a lot of good towards decreasing dependency on automobiles for transportation. More people would be able to simply access most of their daily needs through walking, biking, or taking public transit, which would further decrease the burden on the city to replace our infrastructure. For example, today, rather than driving downtown and parking, I walked from my house over in Greenwich. It was, for me, it was a relatively flat walk, so I can't say the same, that'd be easy for everyone else in Scranton. But if we had, if we were spending less money on replacing our roads with everyone driving large vehicles, wearing them down, we could afford to have better-maintained sidewalks, we could afford to have better public transit. And like I said, I do believe we owe it to all the residents of Scranton to build the city more responsibly, rather than wasting money on spreading everything out as far as possible. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you, you too. That exhaust assignee sheet for this evening, would anyone else like to address, council?
You caught me by surprise, sorry. As I always say, I wasn't going to talk tonight, but when they mentioned about Burghheimer, I have to agree with Les. I received a letter in the mail as well, and I thought, huh, what's this about? So when I opened it, I did call them, they told me to ignore it. So if that's someone that's going to be handling our billing, you know, here I am, a citizen, and Les got a letter, and how many other people got letters, wasted postage, wasted paper, wasted someone's time to put together that information and to come out, and then waste my time, because I have to call down there and ask them, what was this letter all about? And the second thing I wanted to address was the article in the paper that was just addressed by the other gentleman that was up here. I read the same article, and it's amazing, the difference perspective that we take when we read an article. The article was about inflation and the dollar, and how far our dollars were going. It gave a graph of the different expenses, of how much we're spending on our housing, our food, our gas, and all of those things. And it did go into that this family was suffering from this high prices of everything, but it could have been any family in that article. It didn't have to be a Congolese family. There's a lot of families out there suffering because of the high prices. So to zero in on just one individual family is wrong. That's not right, and we all should look out for each other and for you to point. And there's nothing that gets me more when you say "those people." You know, that's grouping everybody into the same bucket, and that's not right. So I had to address that tonight. If anyone has an opportunity to read that article that's on the first page of the paper, and it goes back to page number six, and I read the whole article, and it was very enlightening, and it was not, it was just amazing, as the gentleman stood here and talked about that article, and I read the same article, and we both came away with different perspectives. So just think about that. That's all I have.
Thank you for that, Norma. Also, was the letter you received from Burghheimer in relation to the payroll prep tax? Do you remember?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't recall.
I'll follow up on that. Okay.
I wish I had kept it, because then I could have given it to you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address, council?
Tom Goine-Menuka. First, I would like to address some words that were said here before this body tonight. I understand that some of them were distasteful, and some of us were shocked and definitely put off by them. But I would like to remind everyone out there that the First Amendment does protect speech. And the First Amendment was always ruled on as protecting speech, particularly heinous or discomforting to people, because the voices that were in the past that were so suppressed from speaking were truly those that were oppressed. The general population, who everyone agrees with, does not have to fight for their First Amendment rights, because they are not confronted. It has been the history of this nation, even if they did not like the speech that was coming out from someone, to honor that as part of First Amendment. That changes when it comes to fighting words and some of the territory that was stepped on in that speech. But I would just like to put forward that even though we do not like some things that are said, there is a right to say them. Now, onto the door downstairs for the entrance. I would be interested to know if, in case of an emergency in this building, if the electronic safety door to protect anyone in here is actually unlocked? Because I thought that if someone was waiting at that doorway and someone came from the front of the building who was armed, sure, the employees have a back exit out, they can scurry through the offices, but anyone who is trapped in that foyer has no escape route unless if an alarm is triggered, those doors are unlocked. There is a safety issue involved when you make a cattle trap for people in a building that has no exit from it, because the only exit for them would be the front door. There usually has to be a second exit, and in case of an emergency, there should be something that triggers that door to unlock. I understand in these days, we want, in an emergency, everything locks down, but in this case, that's not actually feasible. It actually puts a hazard to anyone who's stuck on the public side of that doorway. Lastly, tonight, I've heard a lot of money put out through grants, through some matching, some not, where funds are found all over to supply businesses and government and operations with free money that limits the taxpayers, the Scranton taxpayers' requirement to directly pay them. That's all well and good. But what I have not heard is we have positions in this body who are over six months unfilled that lay out there vacant for an extraordinary period of time. I think as a reference, I believe the recycling, the recycling position at the DPW has been open now for six or eight months unfilled. Maybe it's time in cost-cutting to put something forward that says, if a position is not filled within six months, maybe it's time to rescind that position and cut the city budget. If it has not been necessary in a six-month period, then they should have to come back before this body and explain why a position that has gone unfilled, that has not collapsed the system, is again valid and necessary. We're looking at budget constraints. We're looking at spending, but I have seen very little ever come before this body that says, we need to cut in this section. We never trim the fat. We never evaluate what we can lose. And part of that, I believe, are positions, non-mandated ones, that sit idle for a long period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to comment, and we do give wide latitude in terms of freedom of speech, but council's rules do state, and they will be followed, no person, including members of council, shall use their time during citizen's participation to personally insult or attack any individual. Name-calling, profanity, racial or ethnic slurs, discriminatory remarks based on race, color, religion, national origin, ancestry, or place of birth, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, marital status, or age, or any other behavior that is inconsistent with the purpose and intent of conducting official business shall not be permitted. Would anyone else like to address, council?
Marie Schumacher. I do intend to get to a few other things, like the contract that finally made it for the stormwater, and why you're wanting to move. Couple of introductions to final passage tonight. But first, I have to, yesterday, when we came home from school, I was given this and what I'm to say by my almost recently 12-year-old, who cares about my life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, it says, "The Soul Vapor sign on the Music Street near 307 North is blocking the sight of traffic as you are turning left coming out of the parking lot at Dunkin' Donuts." Behind Hello, oh, behind Dunkin' Donuts, behind, beyond Hello, and the Lake Scranton Urgent Care. He said, "I am to tell you that the green is heavy-traffic area, and the yellow is moderate-traffic area, and the sign is in the green area, and it's an accident waiting to happen." And the X is, means that's where the 81 exit is. And any of you who've come out of there know how people do come down. I have, and it brings up another, what 311 does. You know, three, I've asked about this sign myself, through the 311, I think it is, at the mayor's office, and nothing has happened. And I don't know what you do when that doesn't happen. You know, it's right, the sign is right next to the curb, and, you know, maybe if you're in a SUV, you can see the traffic, but if you're in a sedan, as I am, you're taking, you are taking your life.
We'll reach out to zoning and code enforcement to take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Now, why are FNG being, is a reason for that?
So we got a memo, so we got the request last week, and we requested a memo for backup that will appear in our third order next week, because we didn't get the memo in time to, but due to a clerical error. but due to a clerical error on the part of the administration, there was two pieces of legislation that weren't sent down, but need to be approved by council before the deadline of September 30th for the application of these grants.
Okay, now, thank you for that. I am happy to see that there was a contract awarded, but I do have a lot of issues on it. I'm not going to have time for them tonight. Maybe I'll put something in paper and email it to all of you. But the one thing that I do know, it doesn't even have a firm date for when the product is to be delivered. It's sort of like, well, you know, when we get around to it, and we hope to do it within six months, or 12 months. To heck with, you know, hoping to do it. It, we need a firm date when that will happen. Now, this has been a crazy one from the very beginning, because the RFQ went out on the 24th of June, and the proposals were due on July, yeah, what do I have here? Due five days, five working days later, on the 1st of July in this year, or last year? This year. And, I mean, you don't get something like this unless something has happened before. And up until the end, the, this company that is being awarded it, I have problems because there are already our consultant on our MS4, and also did one of the other reports, and has all kinds of information already in their hand, and I will continue next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Good evening. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. I'm going to mention this tonight once more briefly. Send the dump water to the sewer plant. I agree with that, because all they'll do is pollute the gorge behind Naug Park and reverse osmosis. To me, it sounds like the money flowing up to the dump and the pollution flowing down to us. Reverse osmosis. Now, I was reading the paper about the fire department up in, on East Mountain, and I think that we should at least have a well-heeled rescue truck up there, and whatever else they need. A lot of times, they come down here, but actually, East Mountain is, my house is closer to East Mountain than it is to Scranton Central City, so I'd like to see the fire hall there stay the same place, and what we have to do is what we have to do. And on taxation, once again, it was mentioned, we're up to 38 percent. Tax-exempt property now, and something has to be done. We can't just keep taking in tax-exempt buildings and allowing them to eat their way through our property tax, because people can't keep paying more and more and more every year. I also parked on Adams Avenue tonight, and there's been some talk about City Hall being overgrown with needs for space. And on the other side of the parking lot for the fire hall, there is a building that probably has not been occupied for 20 years. Who knows how long. I've never seen any activity in there as long as I've been coming to counsel, and I was wondering if we couldn't get a little eminent domain going instead of moving who knows where, and putting up some buildings and biting a bullet on it, but keeping things tight with the city. I think it's a good idea. It's directly after where the firemen park, and you could put a building there. You could even take the court, because there's nothing left there that, to really service any buildings there, or work out an idea for yourself. But that building has been vacant, it's had nobody in there for at least 20 years. Now, the vote is coming up, and I will remind people that there are people running in many other states that want to re-legislate Social Security, Medicare, all federal programs every five years. There's one guy from Wisconsin that wants to do it every year. So you will be sitting and waiting to see what kind of bone you're throwing. And the point being that we have a governor candidate that's proclaiming he wants the right to overrule the vote in Pennsylvania, even for the Electoral College, and we have a senator candidate that didn't even live here. And I'm sad that Mr., our other candidate took a stroke, but he's not totally invalid, and in fact, he's doing pretty well. And it's time that Pennsylvanians open up their eyes, because if we have two Democrat senators from Pennsylvania, then you overrule at least the kind of clowns that they elected from Florida, and they are clowns. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
So I guess the only comment I have tonight is, there was discussion in public comment about the door downstairs. Mr. Waldenberg, can we reach out to the police chief and just address those safety concerns that were brought up tonight about the door downstairs? Maybe get an overview on safety for that door, if anyone in the foyer is in harm's way, if that were to occur, and just overall reasoning behind the safety of that door? And to add on to that, also, this door here, the glass on the window, the frosted glass on the window, could we ask the police chief too, if he could just explain how this is safe?
I'll ask both points.
Thank you very much. That is all.
Thank you. Dr. Ochil, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do have a comment. I have no problem listening to other people's opinions here. That's important to me, to hear discourse and to hear opinions from our citizens. However, we do ask for a level of decorum here in council, and I believe that's been repeatedly broken in our chambers, and I don't understand why I need to keep addressing hateful, disgusting comments here. I don't understand people's fear of immigrants, and I'm not going to try to understand that here tonight. I did not read the article that was brought up. I certainly will now take a look at it, but I feel to, the speaker said that they don't know, or they know where the line is to not cross, and I don't believe that's true, because to bring up concentration camps and to say that undocumented immigrants belong in concentration camps, I mean, do you realize what happened in concentration camps? Millions of people were killed and tortured. My ancestors, I'm 50% Ashkenazi Jew, and it is so hurtful, and I just can't see what reason someone would want to say that and bring that up here. I can't imagine that it's just for attention, unless you just purposely want to hurt others, and I don't know how it has an effect on your life that there are undocumented immigrants in this country who just want a better life for themselves and their families. So I will not stay silent when issues like this come up. No me quedare callada. No me quedare callada. I will not stay silent. And I do speak Spanish too. So that's all that I have for tonight. I just continue to ask for decorum here in our council meetings.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
Well, I have a couple. So there was a couple of issues brought forward to me over the weekend and early this week, and I passed them on to Mr. Waldenberg, so they're in motion. I have a couple for next week, I just got some texts that I have to deal with, so, and put them together. But I'd like Mrs. Hoda-Wanis' point she brought up today, that we have expired vendor contracts. A prime example was Labor Council a month and a half ago. What I would like to do is request that the administration, if they don't already have it, put together a bidding schedule of all vendors and when they're up, and present it to us, put it on the website, so we can keep an eye on these and have a better handle on this, instead of, you know, coming before us, final hour, we need an extension because, you know, we didn't put it out to bid, or we forgot to put it out to bid. So please send that correspondence and request.
I will, sir.
And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I have, Mr. Waldenberg, could we send correspondence to zoning and possibly code enforcement regarding the sign that Ms. Schumacher brought up on Music Street? I believe the address is 1141, or at least that's what I was able to come up with on my map, but it's at the top of Music Street there.
I'll get that out in the morning, sir.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
5B, for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the city of Scranton to accept payment from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for one right-of-way and one temporary construction easement.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the city of Scranton to accept payment from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for two rights-of-way and two temporary construction easements.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D, for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Fitch and Associates to perform a feasibility study for emergency management services within the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E, for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Herbert Rowland and Grubik, Inc. for East Mountain Stormwater Greenage Assessment.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, on the question, Mr. Waldenberg, could we send correspondence to see if there's a end date for this contract, and what that date would be, and how long may I expect this work to take?
I will, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
On the question, just that solicitor gave, take a look at the agreement here on 5E.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F, for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the Scranton Area Community Foundation to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $136,500 for the project to be known as Century Club Equipment Tech Hub Auditorium Project, located at 612 Jefferson Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18501.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and to move item 5F to seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question, on the question, we did receive a memorandum today with this legislation and also with 5G, which is up next to suspend the rules, requesting that we suspend the rules. This legislation wasn't sent to us for last week's meeting due to a clerical error, but both have to be approved and attached to the applications which are due on September 30th. So the memorandum that we did receive will go into our third order for next week, so the public has the opportunity to view it. We just did not receive it by the time we posted our agenda for this week. Anyone else on the question?
Just on the, just on the question, I didn't get to see this memorandum until I arrived here today. I don't have an email of this memorandum, other than the paper that I was given when I arrived today. So I'm just going to remind council, remind the administration, that when we're expected to vote on something like this, and especially pass it through to seventh order, that we're getting it to us in a timely manner. Do we have a deadline to accept legislation? It was Wednesday at noon, wasn't it, Frank, or am I off with that one?
It's Tuesday at noon.
Tuesday at noon.
So this, when this request did come down, I did request that a memo also come down to explain why this wasn't brought to us in a timely fashion, and why it did need to be passed by suspending the rules. And I don't think that request, what was that, Friday, Frank?
That was Friday, sir.
Friday. So that request was made then Friday, and then we were, you know, we didn't receive it until today.
Okay. As I said in caucus, these are for grant submissions, so I don't have an issue moving them forward, but if it was a different type of legislation, I would.
I agree, because I don't, I wouldn't, you know, I know personally, I wouldn't be agreeable to suspending the rules on anything that, you know, unless there was a valid reason for doing so. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, I'm a question. I'm a man of procedure and process, and to move this item, or legisla, this piece of legislation, 5F, and then the next one, 5G, from fifth to seventh order because of a clerical error, I mean, how do you miss both pieces like this? I have a problem with it. Of course, it's time-sensitive, like everything else, it's usually sent down our way, and there's always a sense of urgency, oh, just put it, let's just put it through. I mean, of course, I'm going to vote to put it through, but I'm still disturbed by the fact that we're not following procedure.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of suspending the rules to move item 5F to seventh order for final vote signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G, for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimodal Transportation Fund for up to $744,670 to be used towards the Cedar Avenue Safe Street Crossing and Trail Use Project. to be used towards the Cedar Avenue Safe Street Crossing and Trail Use Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I mean, I don't mean to revisit this, but I'm just concerned and disappointed with, with, you know, procedures and not being followed.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth Order, 6A.
Hold on. We need a motion to move.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to move item 5G to Seventh Order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of suspending the rules to move item 5G to Seventh Order for a final vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth Order, 6A, reading by title, file to council number 22, 2022, in ordinance, approving the license agreement between the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, and Lackawanna College.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I know there were some questions that were posed, uh, last week, in terms of, uh, does the city in Lackawanna College have a plan for maintenance and repairs for the field? And then also, uh, the fees and amounts prior to- prior, or questions regarding the fees and amounts prior to entering this agreement. We did receive a response that, from the Parks Director, Marissa Duffy, that she will do the, uh, field and site, site assessment and determine what pair, repairs are needed when this term is coming to an end, which is at the end of this year. They are, they're also working on a rental fee schedule, uh, to submit to council for approval for all city parks, um, that we'll expect to receive by the end of the year. And then if approved, the fee schedule, uh, would begin, uh, in the beginning of 2023, moving forward. Anyone else on the question?
So on the question, um, I did post some of those questions regarding this, um, agreement last week. I'm glad to see we got that information. Again, we got it late today. I did not have a chance to look at that. It isn't up tonight for final passage, so I will, um, move this legislation forward. I'll get a chance to review that information and, uh, share my thoughts with it. Last week, when I spoke about it, though, it didn't seem, the, the price that was, um, arrived at, didn't seem that there was any research done of past agreements, especially with, um, with, uh, a college that has, um, has had past dealings with the school district and, and other, uh, other such facilities in our area. So I did have some of those questions. I'm, I'm glad to see we got some of that information. I'm glad to see that there's a plan moving forward. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
On the question, um, I'll also be interested in seeing the additional information to be sent to us prior to a final vote next week. I, I'm glad to see that, uh, perhaps this will help to standardize, uh, the process for future leases of, of, uh, city parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yes, I'm also glad to, well, see that there's going to be a realistic number instead of one just pulled out of the air to rent this field, uh, with, with the construction of a realistic, uh, fee schedule. That is all.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, I don't think we're going to get the whole rental fee schedule by next week, but we are expected to get it by the end of the year, um, for, in the form of legislation, to review and then either approve, amend, uh, et cetera. But I believe we are also waiting for a schedule of when, uh, Lackawanna will be using Chickfeldman. So could you reach out, Mr. Waldenberg, again, and make sure that we get that, uh, and then have it posted on the website before, um, our final vote next week?
I will, Mr. Dunning.
Thank you.
Mr. Waldenberg, also if I may add, um, when we send over that, uh, that correspondence there, can we, um, make sure that there's a differentiation between, say, you know, Lackawanna College, who, students do pay for tuition, and they accept funds there to, like, an organization such as a little league or, or a neighborhood group?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file to council number 23, 2022, in ordinance, designating back in angle parking for certain blocks of St. Anne Street.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh Order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 119, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of JBAS Realty LLC to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the P.A. Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $1,050,000 for the project to be known as JBAS Scranton Tower Project, located at Franklin Avenue and Mulberry Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 120, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the P.A. Racehorse Development and Gaming Act up to the amount of $900,000 for the project to be known as Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape, located from the shed west to the Cedar Avenue intersection, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr., or Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 121, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of United Neighborhood Community Development Corporation to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the P.A. Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $250,000 for the project to be known as Scranton Workforce Housing Project, located at Pine Brook Section, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 122, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Community Development Properties, Scranton, Inc., to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the P.A. Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $210,000 for the project to be known as HVAC Commercial Properties Upgrade Project, located at Linden Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18503.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 123, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Green Ridge Little League to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the P.A. Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $113,765 for the project to be known as Playground Makeover with ADA Compliant Pathways Project, located at 2632 Oliphant Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 124, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Neighbor Works Northeastern Pennsylvania to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the P.A. Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $105,262 for the project to be known as Cloverfield Redevelopment Project, located at 400 West Locust Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, as a West Sider, I'm thrilled that, uh, these, these upgrades are being made at Cloverfield.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 125, 2022, authorizing the mayor, Office of Economic and Community Development, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Barry Isidin Associates to provide demolition engineering services within the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 126, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the Cooperative Farmers Market to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $36,750,000 for the project to be known as Farmers Market Security and Facilities Upgrade Project, located at 900 Baring Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18508.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I, formerly 5F, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 129, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Scranton Area Community Foundation to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the P.A. Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $136,500 for the project to be known as Century Club Equipment Tech Hub Auditorium Project, located at 612 Jefferson Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
7J, formerly 5G, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 130, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimodal Transportation Fund for up to $744,670 to be used towards the Cedar Avenue Safe Street Crossing and Trail Use Project.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7J.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunning.
Yes. I hereby declare item 7J legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order, 8A, file to council number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It has continued to be tabled to allow for additional input, any changes and/or amendments.
8B, file to council number 19, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the 2023 capital budget. It's been tabled to allow for a public hearing, which was held last week, and also for additional public comment. It'll be put on next, it'll be brought off the table in next week's, uh, meeting for a final vote.
8C, Resolution Number 118, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the agreement with Highland Associates for design and construction phase consultation services for restoration and repairs to the exterior of City Hall. It has been tabled because there were some issues with what was in the backup. Uh, we did receive, uh, updated, uh, backup information for that piece of legislation today. So the backup that's supposed to go in will be posted, um, under this, uh, agenda item next week. And then we will, for, to allow for a review, we will, you know, then possibly take it off the table for a final vote, uh, next week. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.